Turn my mic on, I apologize for not having it on sooner. Um, Jen, if you'll take the role, please.
Sure, uh, McDonald, here. Peterson.
Here.
Kokarnic. Podgornik.
Here.
Shelton.
Here.
Sunbug. Ward.
Here.
Student liaison members. Malakia Brostrum.
Here.
Ciara Krawinski. Or Clara, is it Clara? Sorry, I didn't see the L. I don't know what my deal is here, sorry. Um, and Lake and Lions. Alright, Olivia Moore and Swanson. In the audience, we're gone. And Lillian Tellerico. Um, Madam Chair, we have also in attendance, Tim Roweter Superintendent and Business Manager Garrett Holtgren. And Madam Chair, we have a corner.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is our Mission and Vision Statement, which has been combined. That we are driven by purpose, powered by community to educate, engage, and inspire. Our next order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Looking for a motion?
I'll make it, Larry.
There's a motion by Larry, is there a second?
Yeah, I could second it, Joe.
Alright, there's a second. Um, just to let everyone know, we have a few changes on the agenda. Um, under Communications, we have, um, Item Three and Four. Under C Communications, we have, um, Item Two. Under the Consent Agenda, Items H and I. And I, oh, and one more. Under Items That Require Board Approval, Item Nine. And that concludes all of our revisions. Any other questions or comments about that? Alright, hearing none. All those in favor of approving or adopting our agenda this evening, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. And that motion is carried. The next item is the approval of the minutes of the regular school board meeting of November 24th, 2025. Looking for a motion? I'll make that motion, is there a second?
I'll second it, Larry.
Second by Larry. Any questions on the minutes from the last school board meeting? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. And that motion is unanimously approved. Uh, the next order of business is public comment. Is there anybody here who would like to address the board? Alright then. Um, I will spare you my speech. Um, we would also like to move Item Nine A up to hear from Whipfley. That's you. Would you, yes, please. And board members, you have the audit presentation in your packets? And I believe there are some in the audience? Okay, thank you.
You don't have to adjust that mic, you can only adjust it. I don't want anybody yelling at me. So, don't touch it, alright, I'll lean. Don't lean, it'll pick it up, okay, alright, great. Well, thanks for having me again. I've seen many familiar faces, so I'm sure you've, many of you have heard my spiel before. Um, my name is Zach Sharp. I'm here on behalf of Whipfley, who is your auditors for, um, your financial statements, your annual financial statements. So, what you guys have in front of you is a slide deck of maybe, I don't know, fifteen slides or so, I think it is. Um, the usual presentation. The majority of what we're gonna go through today are any findings. Um, and the audited numbers. So, um, in your various funds, your general fund, your food service fund, those types of things. So, there's a couple of things I wanna mention, but it's on the third slide, so I'll just mention it when I get to there. So, we'll go ahead and start right away on Slide Number Two, that says Auditor Responsibility. What do you guys pay us to do? Our job as your auditors is to, one, issue an opinion on the financial statements. So, I know you don't have the financial statements themselves in front of you. That's a larger, full document, sixty, seventy, eighty pages, that we spend all this time putting together, uh, with Garrett this year, and that gets submitted to MDE. Technically, that is the responsibility, that report is the responsibility of man, of management. That document is responsibility of management, and our job is to just issue an opinion on that. So, there's a report in there with the opinion, we'll talk about in a second. Secondly, we also do some testing, and we issue a report based on, um, internal controls and compliance over financial reporting. So, we take a look at some of the processes that are in place. Um, you know, is there anything that we think is a bad process, where we make suggestions, um, for changes? Um, things of that nature, to make sure that the things around the finances and the financial reporting are kind of in order. Thirdly, we test, there are Minnesota state statutes. So, the state of Minnesota has its own rules, um, that we must test for. So, there's audit, there's audit guides out there that we go through, do some various testing, uh, related to the state of Minnesota legal compliance guidelines as well, and we issue a report on that. Finally, you'll notice on here, there's a, this one says pending. This is a slight change from last year. We also issue a report, um, in terms of, uh, compliance and internal controls over federal programs. That's what you may hear in another way phrased as a single audit. So, the single audit is if, um, as a district, you spend more than $750,000 in federal, in federal money. Next year, that threshold's going up to a million, but for this year, it was $750,000. Um, you're required to go under single audit, where we do various tests of compliance on how you're spending that money. Essentially making sure that you're spending that money appropriately. Um, that currently says pending right now is because we're not technically allowed, actually, we're allowed as of today, I believe, to issue this report. So, that didn't get done today, because we, this whole, normally, this is allowed to be issued, not for you guys specifically, but for 2025, six or seven months ago. The compliance supplement normally comes out in May. It came out, like I said, this week or last week. So, we haven't been able to technically issue that report, um, yet. We'll talk about it in a slide or two, about the timeline on when that needs to, that, that single audit report has a different timeline than the rest of the audit. So, that's basically okay, it's nothing to be concerned about. But I don't have any, not that you guys have had, I don't think, issues in the past, but I don't have any potential findings or, um, other issues around that yet to report. So, if we go to the second slide then, what are the results of kind of those four things that we're looking for, or looking at? The first, that opinion on the financial statements. Again, this year, unmodified, that's what you wanna see as a board and as a district. Unmodified essentially means a clean, clean opinion. Um, you know, that basically means that everything in the, in the financial statements, when we're, when they're issued, we believe to be materially correct. So, we can't look at every single transaction throughout the year, otherwise we'd be here even longer than it takes to do the regular audit. Um, but we have thresholds, um, that we have to test beyond. And, you know, all the testing that we did, we believe that if there were any changes, they were corrected. There's nothing in those statements that are presented that we believe to be materially incorrect, incorrect. Secondly, deficiencies in internal controls and compliance. None, again, this, uh, this year. I think that's been the case for multiple years here. We didn't note anything, um, that stands out as far as significant deficiencies, material weaknesses, that we believe are a detriment to the financial reporting systems that are in place. Um, so no findings to report there, good news. Same thing with the Minnesota legal compliance, we don't have any findings there, no non-compliance noted of the things that we test, um, around those things. So, I think some of the more common ones that you'll see, and you maybe have had this one in the past, I don't remember, is, you know, we test to make sure that all your deposits are insured, you know, all your bank deposits have sufficient collateral or letters of credit. Um, we test just to make sure there's no conflicts of interest. We test, um, around your, uh, you guys are often probably at these meetings, talk about, you know, large projects bidding, um, and contracting around, there's state statutes around that, to make sure that, you know, amounts over 175,000, that you guys go out for bid, get sealed bids, those type of things, we test that kind of stuff. So, no findings to report around that. And then, as I talked about, um, that pending item, from what, from the testing we've done so far, that's incomplete. We haven't found anything, but I can't, um, that is a pending, a pending no deficiency answer on that one, just because we haven't fully gone through and issued that report quite yet. So, this is a slide I was sort of talking about in terms of varying deadlines. It's a new slide I've added this year, just to kind of clear up some of the confusion that happens this time of year, especially when we get into these December meetings, about what's due for the audit and what's not due. Um, so, last week, or about a week and a half ago, um, you'll see that first bullet point. Ufar's audited data is required to be submitted to the state of Minnesota. So, this is things such as your revenues and expenditures, um, all of your fund balances, your unassigned restricted fund balances, that gets, basically all this stuff from your accounting system gets uploaded, sent to the state, and that is due as of the end of November. This year, we had till last Monday, uh, the first of December. And that has been done and submitted. So, that's kind of what we're presenting on today, is all the stuff that you guys as a board mostly care about anyway. Revenues, expenditures, budget to actuals, um, and those ending fund balances. So, two other timelines. The financial statements themselves, um, various years, we may have had them issued by now, by the time we do this meeting. They're not technically issued at this time, that's okay. The, um, financial statements, that bigger document is technically due at the end of the calendar year. So, that's as of December 31st. So, those will be done, you know, we'll get those done in the coming weeks here, and issue those statements and get them submitted to the, to the state of Minnesota, to MDE. And that's kind of a, a second timeline, um, in terms of how the audit goes. And so, it does say there's, um, the submission is pending some compensated absences, absences and severance calculations. This is stuff that is new this year. You've had compensated absences and severance on your books before. This year, there was a new standard issued, uh, new accounting standard around compensated absences. So, what is compensated absences? This is stuff as your, stuff such as your vacation accrual, your sick leave, all the different various types of leave that, um, is associated with your employees, that there's an accrual that's calculated around that number and put on your books. It's not in your funds, so it's not a liability in your general fund, but it's a liability on your accounting books. Uh, up and ready until very recently. So, we'll work on that likely in January, and get that issued prior to that, uh, March 31st deadline, which is the, uh, your guys' deadline nine months after year end. So, that's sort of the findings timeline portion of the presentation. Now, we're gonna jump right into numbers. Um, feel free to stop me at any point. It's gonna be just mostly a chart of numbers on each slide. We'll go through each of the various funds, and I'll just kind of highlight a few things here and there, um, for the next five or 10 minutes. The first slide, balance sheet governmental assets. So, your governmental funds are your main, um, four funds for you guys as of right now, or as of June 31st, 2025. Your general fund, your food service fund, your debt service fund, and you'll see there's a column there, it says non-major governmental fund. The reason it has that label is because it's small enough this year to qualify as non-major. There's thresholds to make a fund major or non-major, that changes from year to year. Last year, your food service was small enough where it fit into that bucket. But for this year, non-major, just assume that that's your community service, your Fund Four, um, fund for this presentation. So, you have your four main funds, um, displayed there. Obviously, if you just look at the assets, balance sheet assets as of the end of the year, most of your assets are cash and investments. You guys likely know that, um, uh, your money into your accounts and, and the various, uh, investment accounts. Uh, there's also some significant assets related to property taxes and, um, a big number there from, due from Minnesota Department of Education, about 2.6 million. So, we have to do a cutoff at some point for the financial statements. That cutoff is June 30th. After June 30th, there's still money that comes in that's related to FY25, especially as it relates to your gen ed and special ed dollars. Um, so we just make sure to get that revenue into FY25, even though it may, may come in in July, August, September, um, from the, from the MDE. So, that's what that receivable is, that due from Minnesota Department of Education value is. Otherwise, overall, you got just over $16 million in total assets. Most of that, uh, being in your general fund, with just over 10. Food service has about 1.7, debt service about 2.5, and that community service about 1.5, 1.6. If we go to the next slide, we'll talk about a little bit briefly about your liabilities, deferred inflows, and fund balances. So, we're gonna dive deeper into some of these funds in terms of revenue and expenses, that's an easier thing to look at. So, um, governmental fund, yeah, liabilities, fund balances. Couple of things to point out, most of your liabilities are gonna be salaries payable, so this is just your payroll that is related to FY25, that, um, is paid out in July and August. Those summer payoffs, especially for your teachers, get accrued back into, um, fiscal year 25. So, that's what that, uh, mostly is in terms of your liabilities. Couple other accounts payable and things of that as well, but, um, the biggest thing here will probably be the bottom half, bottom third of the slide. Uh, the fund balances is probably what you're, gonna be, we'll talk about this, there's a fund balance specific slide, but you'll see in terms of fund balance overall, in the far right column, you'll see it's just about 6.1, 6.14 million dollars in total fund balances. Most of that is in the restricted category. So, obviously, you guys get revenues that come in. Usually, it's for a specific purpose, um, therefore making it, um, restricted. A lot of the state money that comes in has to be spent for a specific purpose. You'll notice all the dollars, except for a small portion in food service. Food service can only be spent on food service, so most of, most of all that money is restricted. Same with your debt service. So, the money that you guys levy in your debt service fund, that's for a specific purpose, that's to make your levy payments on your outstanding debt. So, a big chunk of your restrict, or of your fund balance is that restricted dollars. There was a small portion of unassigned this year. So, you'll see in the general fund, you do have about $175,000 in unassigned fun, fund balance. This is sort of your rolling, um, fund balance number, you know. Obviously, you guys are five, close to six months in here, but to be budgeted for use in FY26 and beyond. But it's sort of your carryover balance. As of 630, you had about $175,000 of discretionary funds there. Now, we're gonna move forward and talk about each of the funds specifically, kind of revenue and expense wise. The easiest way to do that, I've done it in a budget versus actual, um, framing here, so, you know, 'cause some balances can go up or down, but that was planned. So, one thing we look at here, we'll start with the general funds. This is your funds 1, 3, 5, and 11. I believe it's general, transportation, capital projects, and, um, student activities are all lumped into the general fund. So, revenue wise, obviously, if you look at that actual column, that's the audited number there, that most of your dollars are state funded, right? Your gen ed, your special ed, that's a huge portion of the district's income. And, and then you also see some property tax dollars, about 3.6, 7 million there. And property tax levy in the general fund, and then just shy of $2 million in other local and county revenues, and then some other miscellaneous and interest income as well that came in. To total, just shy of $30 million in overall revenue for the district, about 29.6. How was that compared to budget? You'll see, you actually got more revenue in than you had budgeted for in that final budget in, I believe, you guys usually do the final budget, um, I think maybe around this time, um, of the subsequent year. So, you guys got 1.68 million dollars more than you'd expected from that final budget that you did. You'll see that's sort of offset by the next slide, as we move into it, that your total expenditures, about halfway down there, you'll see is about 1.8 million dollars more than what you had expected as well. So, more revenue this year than you had budgeted for, more expense. But you'll see if we kind of move down to the bottom, the third line from the bottom, that net change in fund balance, you'll see it's a negative $47,000. So, $47,000 seems like a lot of money. That's, you know, in terms of an overall change from what you had expected, that's very close. Um, especially in a, a fund as big as a general fund. So, I would say the outcome of your general fund this year is very close to what you guys expected it to be. Um, otherwise, I'm not gonna point out too much otherwise on this slide. Just to note that your actual general fund balance as of the end of the year, in that third column, uh, at the very bottom, about 2.8 million dollars in general fund, uh, dollars, which most of that, as I said, is restricted. We'll move on then to food service. So, this one, you, you will see, again, we're gonna concentrate on that actual column, about 1.27 million dollars, we'll say, in total revenue, about 1.1 million dollars in expenditures. Then, that puts your net change in fund balance, essentially your net income, at about $159,000 or so, um, for the fiscal year, for FY25, to bump up that ending fund balance to just over 1.6 million dollars. So, it's a pretty good number to have in your fund, in your food service. Obviously, as I mentioned before, that, those dollars are restricted, so they can only be spent on food service, but it never hurts to have, um, to have fund balance rather than not have it. Uh, but, I know, I think MDE's, I don't know, does MDE bug you about spending that down at all? They haven't yet, but okay, 'cause a lot of times, you know, if you have a fund balance and you have a couple of years in a row of a positive fund balance, you're like, hey, you should spend that down on something for food service. So, um, if that hasn't happened yet, maybe they will later this year, next year. But, um, it's nice to have, like I said, it's better to have it than not have it, that's for sure. Fund Four, Community Service Fund, on the next slide. Um, this one usually, I mean, as expected, comes out roughly, roughly, I'll say, to a net zero. Total revenues, about 1.58 million dollars, total expenditures 1.6. To have a slight loss there, about $57,000 in that fund this year. Very close to what you guys had budgeted for. You guys budgeted a, um, loss of around 60, 65,000 dollars. So, within $7,000 of what you budgeted, that's very, very close, um, in that fund this year. So, if we go to the bottom line, you, you have, after that loss, you still have over a million dollars, so about 1.1 million dollars in community service fund balances as well. So, obviously, that, those are all restricted through, through your various programs, which we'll sleep, we'll see on a future slide as well. Moving quickly now, we'll move quickly through debt service. Debt service is very self-explanatory. This fund is set up to pay your debt obligations. So, um, basic, essentially, you guys levy for this every year as part of your property taxes. That's the revenue that comes in. You get a small portion of your revenue from the state of Minnesota as well. So, you'll see about 1.9 million dollars in revenue, about 1.9 million dollars in expenditures. Um, 'cause normally, when you guys, you know, do your levy, approve those levies every year, it's to approve, uh, your debt payments, and those debt payments are scheduled out. So, you pretty much levy for what your debt payment, you know your debt payments are gonna be. So, this fund is always gonna be pretty close to a wash, um, every single year. So, this year, it was about 68, $100 increase, and leaving you with a fund balance of $630,000 at the end of the year to pay off those, um, debt obligations that will, we, there's actually a slide on that to see how many of those you have left. But, that's the balance you have to pay those off. We move on to restricted fund balances. I brought this up. You guys had 6 million or so in fund balance. You'll see here, if we go to the bottom, 5.5 of that is restricted. This is the various programs that it's restricted under. So, um, general fund has various, um, restriction tags there. Most of that, almost all of it is state dollars that come in. Those have to be spent on approved program expenses, um, for those specific programs. So, you guys got about 200, or 2.2 million dollars in restricted funds, four dollars that you have received from the state of Minnesota that needs to be spent on those programs that it's for. And then, on the bottom half of that, bottom left half of that slide, you'll see food service, community education, debt service are all included there. I noted off the top, all, all of those funds, the full amounts are restricted. So, um, they have very specific purposes, so those can't be spent on whatever you want, but... Um, small note, on the right side of that slide, non-spendable. There's a category where, um, you guys have assets and fund balance that's considered non-spendable for obvious reasons. If you think about it, inventory, it's not actually dollars that can be spent, that's assets and inventory. Prepaid expenses, as of the end of the year, that's already spent. So, prepaid expenses are assets that you've already paid something for, and just haven't, accounting wise, uh, got the, um, incurred that expense quite yet. So, that's clearly unspendable because it's already been spent. So, you guys have $258,000 of non-spendable fund balance as well. Next two slides, I'll just talk for just 10 seconds about long-term debt. These are your outstanding obligations that you guys still have, um, in terms of your bonding. And you have one certificate of participation as well. So, it looks like five obligations left totaling about 17.6 million dollars. Um, that you guys are, will continue to levy for and pay off over the next, if you should go to the next slide, the next, it looks like 10 or 12 years. So, um, you'll see kind of, this is scheduled out of those five obligations. You can kind of see over the next decade or so, what are the amounts we're gonna be paying on those? That doesn't obviously include any new debt issuances, I don't know if you've done any this year, but any future ones will obviously will add on to this total as well. Uh, the last fund, briefly, we'll talk about, you guys have, your Fund 25 is your OPEB trust fund. Not a whole lot going on this year in that fund, just a good, I mean, a good healthy chunk of investment income you guys earned in that fund. Looks like a small, I think maybe a small subsidy was paid out of that account this year. Otherwise, 632,000 dollars or so in interest income on that, those assets that you guys have. Um, I believe, is just through PMA, in PMA. So, you guys have a PMA account, uh, with investment assets, and you've accrued a bunch of investment income in this year on that. So, that's to be paid for future, um, post-employment benefits. Finally, this slide, I don't have anything really to talk about on it today, but if you have this full document, you would note that about two-thirds of it is the footnotes. This just kind of lays out what's in each of those footnotes. Um, kind of the big chunk of all the information. So, this is kind of the reading, that's kind of the, if you weren't into the numbers portion of the kind of the slides we just went through, you want to actually read text, this is where a lot of that would be to really describe kind of what, you know, if you wanted more information on the capital assets, or liabilities, or pension plan, this is where you'd find all that information. So, otherwise, that's it. For me, I know I rambled on for, I don't know, 15, 20 minutes. Nobody interrupted me, nobody yelled at me, nobody fell asleep. So, if anybody has any questions, feel free to ask. Or if you come up with any questions after the fact, Garrett could find me too.
I do have one, Zach.
Yep.
We often refer to our fund balance as a goal.
Yep.
Uh, throughout things, and that, that, that is the unrestricted fund balance, is that correct?
Which one?
Well, we talk about, we would like a healthy fund balance.
Oh.
That's the unrestricted fund balance.
Sure.
So, as a percentage, where are we sitting with that?
I'm sure in terms of your unrestricted versus like your capital expenditures, do you guys have a fund balance, probably like policy that you try to meet every year? I'm guessing with the unrestricted of 175, you probably didn't meet that. Um, 'cause the number would probably need to be bigger, 'cause usually, that's a number of like, your budgeted expenditures for the year, which is probably, you know, a very large number. My guess is that, that would be, and it's usually related to general funds, that would probably be 20, 30 million. So, 175 percentage of 30 million is a small percentage. I'm sure you'd like that to be bigger, um, but it's not. You know, I've seen a lot, I've seen much worse as well. So, um, it's not anything that like we are, as your auditors, are concerned about. Um, but I know that that's a battle that you guys have to do every year in terms of budgets and spending and all that sort of stuff as well, so...
Correct, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Hey, Zach will start our cars so that they're nice and warm.
Yeah, I'll just start walking through. Small town, right? Doors are unlocked on everybody?
Yes, of course. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Your firm always does a great job. Alright, next order of business, our communications. Um, commendations and congratulations. Commend band directors Katie Sandoor and Caitlin Roll, as well as our cheer squad and their advisory. Roll, as well as our cheer squad and their advisor Karina Corcoran, for their outstanding performance at the Christmas City of the North Parade. Congratulations to Gianna Hansen for being named to the Duluth News Tribune All-Area Girls Soccer First Team. Congratulations to Lynn Peterson, Director of a Wicked Christmas Carol, and the amazing cast and crew on their wonderful performances. Commend our student, staff, teachers, and the Proctor community for contributing to the National Honor Society's Coins for Toys fundraiser. The project earned $1,899.11, and will be used to benefit families within our community. Anything else that needs to be added this evening? All right, moving on, student liaison comments, are you ready?
Yeah, all right, I'll start off with Pike Lake tonight. Um, so, uh, currently Pike Lake is prepping for their holiday concert on December 12th, which is next Friday, and, um, the, uh, first rehearsal is Wednesday, and then the showcase is Friday at 9:30 and 1:30. And then, um, last Thursday, uh, um, the third, fourth, and fifth graders, um, went to the wicked play, and they, um, really enjoyed that. That was a big point on, um, Mr. Hughes's, um, update. And then the art class is wrapping up some of their Christmas activities. So Mrs. Kessler, um, is, uh, displaying the, their art projects in the gym. So, um, if you go there, you can see those in the gym.
Bayview visited PHS for the school play and loved it. They gave a huge shout out to students, teachers, parents, and all the staff for making that happen. Next Friday on the 12th, Bayview is hosting a movie night sponsored by Pi, showing The Grinch at 6:00 PM in the cafeteria. Each student will receive a free bag of popcorn, and Bayview is preparing their holiday concerts on December 19th and 20th.
All right, next is, uh, Deadlock Middle School, and of course, all their winter activities have started up, and the kids are super excited to be involved in them this year. Um, and next week, the middle school choir concert is on Tuesday at 7 o'clock, and then the seventh and eighth grade band concert will be on the following Tuesday, um, which is the 16th at 7 o'clock as well. On the 19th, there's a fun winter afternoon, like wrap-up, like that's the last day before Christmas break, and, um, they're going to have a chance to go to Montalack and tubing. Um, and the staff are looking forward to kind of building, um, some fun, um, activities for the kids that day and bond with the students, and off to Malakia.
I have a little bit more for JMS. Olivia and I are going to be holding a cultural food night potluck event for our middle school affinity club. Um, all of you are obviously invited, please bring food. It's going to be really wonderful, lots of good food to try, and it's going to give people a chance to share their culture with each other. Um, and then I've got some notes for the high school. We have new lunchroom tables that are absolutely lovely, thanks to student government. I'll mention for the 100th time that a Wicked Christmas Carol was awesome, and if you didn't see it, I'm very sorry. Um, and then checkpoint three is this Friday, so make sure that everyone gets their work done. NHS is hosting a memorial blood drive on Friday, and then the staff had their second annual Golden Forks Awards, or they have them next week in Iraq. Next week was the inauguration of this event, and Mr. Martin won. It's a very, very fun team-building event, I'm told. And then lastly, PHS is having a winter spirit week next week, leading up to winter break, so there will be an assembly and all that kind of fun stuff, like dress-up days. So I'm looking forward to it, that's all I have.
This is it? All right, thank you. Any questions of our liaisons? We appreciate you. Um, next, our communications from the media, items related to the district from the Proctor Journal, um, from the November 26th, 2025 edition. Um, you've heard about the Wicked Christmas Carol. Unified Proctor High School Student of the Week was Tobias Shunk, uh, December 3rd. Um, city sets levy, school next, again, the Christmas Carol. Scouts students deliver Proctor food shelf boost. Proctor High Student of the Week, Olivia Moore in Swanson, one of our student liaisons, and the area parking lot gets a hat trick of new fixes. Talk about clever journalism on that title. Also, there is an item relating to the district from the Duluth News Tribune, um, December 6th edition, Proctor High School paper, A Lasting Reminder of Journalism's Value. And if you didn't see it in the, you, you need to look at it, it, it's a wonderful article, and you get to see Uncle Phil. All right, our next, um, agenda item is the consent agenda, looking for a motion.
Move, Jen.
There's a motion by Jen, is there a second?
I'll second Tammy.
Second by Tammy, any questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no, and that motion is carried. The next item is the superintendent report, Mr. Roweater.
Thank you. Um, first and foremost, um, a reminder for Amy Lynn and Tammy, uh, this Thursday, December 11th, at 2:30, we're meeting to kind of meet with our technology department to talk about what technology is going to look like here moving forward soon. But, uh, a reminder of that. Also, Monday next week, uh, at 3:30, will be meet and confer. I know Lynn, you said you can't make it, right? So is there another board member that would like to sit in Lynn's place, have meet and confer?
I think so.
Yeah? All right? Yeah, right, okay. Um, and then the MSBA conference is coming up, uh, I, I think Lori's got everything set for that, um, and she got people signed up for the dueling pianos, so that's going to be exciting. Good time. A couple of things happening, uh, at Bayview and Pike Lake, uh, with the 30-minute prep, uh, negotiations with Ed Minnesota. Uh, we've been working here in the first semester on getting a schedule ready for second semester, so we can implement the 30-minute preps and also have specialist schedules that kind of reduce specialist turnover. Uh, that was another emphasis, uh, as we were looking at that. Um, and so, uh, after meeting with the task force and with, of teachers and, and, uh, working with our administrative team, um, we, we feel like we have a, a pretty good plan in place to at least, uh, implement second semester. Uh, as I mentioned in the board report, it's kind of a get started, get better approach right now. We're going to implement it, and then we'd spend this second semester kind of analyzing what are the issues that we're seeing with that, so that we can, uh, kind of edit and revamp, uh, the plan to make sure that it works for both sites, uh, for the 26, 27 school year. So, uh, as you meant, saw on the consent agenda, part of the issue that we had as we were working on this was, uh, you know, our FIAD, uh, having, uh, our elementary FIAD teachers starting, or teaching classes at the middle school, um, with the way that we had to create the specialist schedule, it required that, uh, they both spend most of their days at, at the elementaries, um, which then resulted in three sections here that were uncovered, uh, and then there were also two six assignments that were planned for second semester, so that's where the 1.0, uh, PE addition came in. Um, so, um, and the way that we're going to kind of create equity between the two sites, uh, to have equity with, with art and music and, and STEM and, and things like that, uh, is we're going to kind of divide the semester two into three six-week blocks, uh, so that, because Pike Lake only has a, a kind of a two-day rotation of specialists, and Bayview has a four-day rotation, uh, one of the six-week blocks, like art would be at Pike Lake, and then the other two, they'd be at Bayview, so that there'd be an equal amount of time they'd get for art and for music and, so some that we're trying, some that we might carry into next year, uh, as well. So that's, we're excited to, to see how that starts out, uh, this week. I think the, uh, administrators are going to be talking with their staff, making sure that, that things are squared away there. Uh, one of the goals in our strategic plan priorities was, uh, visitor management systems at our site, uh, making sure that when visitors come in, there's, there's a procedure, uh, to make sure that, uh, you know, they check in, they have badges, they, you know, name tag, things that, you know, people are seeing. And so Bayview second semester is going to be, uh, piloting this system called Visitor OS, uh, which is like a kiosk system in the office, prints out badges, uh, does background checks on people when they come in. There's also an app so they can pre-check in, get a QR code, stuff like that. So, uh, you know, instead of spending $20,000 on this thing for all the sites right now, Bayview said, hey, we'll, we'll, we'll try it, see how it works, so that we make sure it works well before we spend the money on the other sites. So, uh, we'll be implementing that, so you might hear some grumbling from people, you know, but everywhere you go now, that's the way it is, you know, so.
Is it driver's license, Tim?
Yep. Um, one of the things also, as we look to start our Minnesota MTSS, uh, work, uh, one of the big pieces that we're focusing on through Minnesota MTSS is, uh, building the infrastructure so that, um, you know, all of our systems in our district are aligned, moving in the same direction, uh, and, and working for the same goals, and, and a big area of that is communication with our stakeholders. And so one of the things that we're implementing here, uh, is just a community input form that's going to be on all of our newsletters, it can be on our website. It's, it's a simple form that just basically asks, do you have any feedback, tips, comments, you know, concerns, things like that? You know, instead of just going and asking for feedback when we need it for, for strategic plan, I wanted to create a, just kind of a open-ended, anytime people have feedback or concerns or things that they could share them, and the narrative language is, is always the best, you know, them to be able to write, here's what, here's our concern, here's the thing that, the feedback. You know, we're going to put QR codes around our district as well that has a link to those, uh, so that we can continue to, to have that two-way communication happen, uh, in our district.
Who will monitor that?
Huh?
Who will monitor that?
Me. Yeah, Lori and I. So we'll get an email actually every time someone submits one, so, so we won't just sit there like empty, and no one's seeing that.
Will that be for students too?
Yep. Yep, all of our community stakeholders, student staff, families. Um, and it's, it's anonymous unless they choose to put the name on it, so. Uh, and then just, again, the strategic plan updates, uh, you know, I, after last meeting, I sent it out to our union to, to share with their members, uh, to provide, get feedback. I sent it, uh, it's, it's part of a newsletter for people to look at and provide feedback. I did get quite a bit of feedback from people, uh, on different pieces in there, um, which, you know, prompted some, some tweets here and there, but, um, but for the most part, I think it's at a point where we're ready to, to move forward with the priorities and be working on, uh, kind of our action plans and whatnot. So, um, hopefully tonight it'll get approved and we can, and, uh, it'll be official, so. And that's all I got? Any questions?
No?
Thank you.
Okay.
I, I, I just have one comment, Tim. Um, working on that, uh, relief for the, the, um, elementary schools, uh, was a high priority in our negotiations, as you know, and, and kudos to the group that.
Right.
Put that together. It, it's an attempt. Um, it might not be perfect, but at, at least we're making movement on it, so thank you.
Right, yep.
All right, the next is, um, the school board meeting dates for 2026, and those were in your board packet. Any questions about them?
This was something that Carrie had on, Lori said, well, Carrie had this on a, a meeting last year at this time, so she's like, should we include it again? Yeah, sure, so.
The only thing I wish is that sometimes we could avoid, avoid concerts, and I know they're always on Monday nights, but like tonight's a choir concert.
Right.
And we can't be there. So I, I don't know if we can.
I just have a question about our July meeting. Last year, I think we moved the meeting to later in July.
We did.
Um, and I, I don't know, did you feel like things were better having it later?
I thought it seemed like a long time.
A long time from June until the end of July?
I just thought it seemed long.
Okay.
But that's just me.
I thought you just moved it back for my benefit, wasn't it? Being I was brand new?
No, I think it was because there's usually so much stuff in the years past, we've had to have, uh, you know, add an extra meeting in August so that we can accomplish the, the work that needs to happen with people resigning and switching and job hopping and taking leaves of absences and whatnot.
That's when it gets the busiest, is, is towards the end of July, and I know what you're saying, Lynn, um, no matter where, whether we meet that first date or the second date, there's a long stretch, it's the same stretch no matter where we meet.
Yeah.
But at the end of July, we're into more of what need, the actions that need to be taken.
So if you look at June 8th, and then June 22nd, and then we have a holiday, and people are gone, you know, and I don't, I think principals take their vacation during that, usually that, that break in July, and so then everyone comes back to work, and it's usually a very short meeting and not much gets taken care of. So I just, I'm just considering, I mean, those are, again, these are just, we're not voting on them at all right now, but just consideration for, for looking at how it marches out and, and what building administrators' holiday break is usually, is it, does it make sense to move it to the end of July? I don't know.
And that would be July 20th, which is about a month.
Is that July 20th or 27th then, because is that the second?
But we could, could we do it on the 20th, so sort of split the difference?
Well, I don't care, I mean, I think we, we compete then with city, uh, the city council meeting, but I, I, we've always, I understand, but we al, we always try to go opposite of them. And, and that's okay, we've, we've had that extra meeting in August on a Monday.
Yep.
Um, and I think we all kind of, um, hold Monday sacred for board meeting stuff, so it doesn't, it does not matter to me, I'm just asking for, uh, for some thought to go in, um, and we can, we can set that then at the first meeting in January.
Yeah. Does anybody else have thoughts on that?
And we don't have a problem with our October meeting being Indigenous Peoples' Day? It's no conflict there, right?
What's that?
Do we have school, do we have school that day?
Yeah, we don't, we don't observe it, it's an optional, okay.
Well, we, this year we had a staff.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
And then December 14th is later, it's like tonight is the 8th, so that one's pushed back a week. Because this, now, this, this one seems like a long time between this one and our first meeting in January.
Oh.
So, so December 14th.
It's the second Monday.
It's Monday, so it should be the seven.
Well, because Labor Day pushes everything back, because it's late Labor Day next year too.
Yeah, but it's usually the second, we, we meet the second and fourth Mondays, and so that's not the second Monday. Oh, it is, yeah, never mind, okay.
Okay, all right. Well, board members take a look at it, and we can discuss it at our January meeting. It'll be forever from now. Okay, the next is the strategic plan update. So, Mr. Roweater, do you have anything you'd like to say about it?
No, other than what I said earlier.
I did have a couple of questions. Um, there were some things where it said, you know, you wanted to increase this by 30%, and so I wondered if those shouldn't have some sort of a timeline, because it seemed like 30% from what to what?
Well, we actually took those out.
Oh.
Yeah.
Is that in here?
Yeah, the most recent one he got sent is.
Not this one?
The one that Lori sent with the package should be.
Sorry, I didn't get to it, I apologize.
You, you weren't doing anything.
No, I was doing nothing, so, all right, I, I do apologize. And then are some of them going to be survey-based? So there'll be a survey at the beginning, a survey at the end? Okay. And, and I realize that you wanted this to be more fluid, so that it's not, you know, we did this, check the box, and then you create a new one, so I, I understand that. All right, the next item, our school board district committees, policy committee met, um, and the changes will be in your January packet. There wasn't anything significant, um, some were legislative changes, so they will be in your January packet, and those policies will be approved. Activities committee, anything you'd like to say, Joe?
Anybody have questions on the meeting minutes?
Okay, then no.
All right, thank you. Um, the enrollment report was in your board packet, any questions on that?
I would imagine we'll see a bump again at semester two, because we have a waiting list of people that we've been contacting about enrolling in semester two, so.
And we still have some sections that are closed?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, next, legislative updates, do we have anything? Board goals, we will be looking at our board goals again in January. Township and city communications.
I'm trying to get a meeting set up with Jess Rich, uh, and she's been hard to pin down, just to get an update on development and where that, that stands. So I haven't heard much of anything, but, so.
That would be great to know.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, action items, finance director report. All right, action items. Finance director report and approval of treasurer's report. So, finance director's report, Garrett.
Yeah, I feel like I've had a lot of financial talks, so I'll just be really brief. Um, first thing you'll notice, um, in your next action item, there are no transfers listed. That's just because we had no transfers um last month, so not an error. Got a question on that. Um, second, um, food service, so we're currently going through a food service audit, um, through the Department of Education, um, looking at the um USDA guidance for that. So one of the comments um that Zach made earlier was in reference to the um large food service fund balance. Um, the recommendation is for three months of expenditures. Um, we're currently at like sixteen, um, so we'll most likely be receiving corrective action related to that to try and spend that down, and that's where new serving lines, new cafeteria tables, um, doing those items to try and start to spend down um that large balance. Um, and then just other question on fund balance as it pertains to the audit, so we have about um twenty-seven to twenty-eight million dollars in um general fund expenditures. Board policy is ten percent, which would be um two point seven to two point eight million dollars that um through board policy we would like to have, so quite a bit short of that.
Okay. Any questions? All right. The next is the uh approve the, the payment of bills dated November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, in the amount of three hundred ninety-four thousand, one hundred forty dollars and seventy-one cents, covering checks one-two-five-zero-six-two through one-two-five-one-two-three, and you said there were no ACH transfers?
ACH transfer, yeah, they're ACH related to payroll.
ACH transfers. And then approve the payment of bills dated December first, twenty-twenty-five, in the amount of eighty-five thousand, two hundred ninety-three dollars and seventy-eight cents, covering checks one-two-five-one-two-four through one-two-five-one-six-six, and all ACH transfers. And to approve the payrolls for November twenty-twenty-five in the amount of two million, um, thirteen thousand dollars, no, thirteen thousand, ninety-nine dollars and eight cents. Looking for a motion.
So move Jen.
There's a motion by Jen. Is there a second?
Yeah, I can second it, too.
All right, there's a second by Jim. Um, any questions of Garrett? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no, and that motion carries. The next um is to accept the audit report for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, looking for a motion. There's a motion by Larry. Is there a second?
I'll second Tammy.
Second by Tammy. Any questions about the audit report? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the audit report say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no, and that motion is carried. The next is to approve the ATPPS plan for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-seven school year, is looking for a motion.
I'll move Joe.
There's a motion by Joe. Is there a second? Second by Larry. Um, Mark, did you want to speak to it? Is there anything you wanted to say here?
Unless you have questions.
Does anybody have questions about the ATPPS report that was in your board packet? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the ATPPS plan signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed say no, and that motion is carried. The next is to approve the strategic plan for Proctor Public Schools, looking for a motion. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
I can second Jen.
Second by Jen. Um, any questions about the strategic plan? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the strategic plan signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no, and that motion is carried. The next is to approve the recommendation from business manager Garrett, business manager Garrett Hultgren to certify the twenty-twenty-six levy of five million, seven hundred and forty thousand, five hundred ninety-seven dollars and three cents, looking for a motion. Motion by Larry. Is there a second?
Second Tammy.
Second by Tammy. Any questions of our business manager? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the recommendations signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no, and that motion is carried. The next is to approve a re- the request for a leave of absence from Chris Hagamire, grade two teacher at Pike Lake Elementary, beginning August twenty-twenty-six through June twenty-twenty-nine, looking for a motion. There's a motion by Larry. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Get that, Tammy.
Second by Tammy. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the recommenda- uh, whoa, I'm in the wrong one. Yes, approving the rec- no, approving the request of leave, I already crossed it off, sorry. Approving the request for leave of absence, say aye. All those opposed say no, and that motion is carried. The next is to approve the recommendation from the superintendent, individual contract, contract committee, and the community education director to approve the contract for Natasha Ellis, general community education coordinator for September one, twenty-twenty-five through August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven, looking for a motion.
So move Jen.
There's a motion by Jen. Is there a second? I'll second that. Um, any questions about that contract? Hearing none. All those who vote to approve the recommendation signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no, and that motion is carried. The next is to approve the recommendation from superintendent, individual contract committee, and the community education director to approve the contract for Caitlin Kohler, general community education coordinator for September first, twenty-twenty-five through August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven, looking for a motion.
So move Jen.
There was a by Jen. Is there a second?
Sorry, can I?
Second by Larry. Any questions about that contract? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the recommendation signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no, and that motion is carried. The next is to approve the recommendation from the superintendent, individual contract committee, and the community education director to approve the contract for Roxanne Olson-Hurst as the assistant director of community education for July first, twenty-twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven, looking for a motion.
I'll make it, Larry.
There's a motion by Larry. Is there a second?
Yeah, I can second it, too.
Second by Jim. Any questions or comments about the contract? All right, hearing none. All those in favor to approve the recommendation signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no, and that motion is carried. The next is to approve the recommendation from the superintendent and the individual contract committee to approve the contract for Garrett Hultgren, business manager for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-seven fiscal years. Um, looking for a motion.
I suppose I could. Yes, I like the motion.
And I will second that motion.
Very good.
All right, any questions or comments about Garrett's contract? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the recommendation signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no, and that motion is carried. Uh, there are no resolutions this evening. So the next, our board member comments.
Yesterday I went and saw the wicked Christmas carol, and um if you wanted a retired teacher reunion, you would have had it. My, oh, Sheila Held, hello Mary Haynes, hello Gordy Westendorf, oh, look, there's Glenn Sorensen, you know, everyone was there, um, Diane Rochenfels, I mean, I don't know, you, your, your friends.
Rich Peterson, my friend.
I know. Your friends are a tight-knit group, and they are so good to our district, um, and normally I just see them at the Reed banquet, and here I, you know. So anyways, um, and Olivia said it best, you know, the, um, bringing drama back to life, thank you. It was so good to be there.
Anybody else? I just wanted to thank our community and our staff members for coming out to see it. We had five hundred and fifty playbills printed, and they all went. Um, so I had to ask um Wayne if he would print twenty-six more for my cast members, so, because they didn't receive them, so I, I just, the outpouring of support was just wonderful. And was it the Tin Man, or was it the Scarecrow who said that your family isn't necessarily your family by birth? It's the people that love and surround you, so we have a great family at ISB seven four.
I'm just so glad that you picked um, picked a performance that puts butts in seats, and we've been saying that for years. To bring drama back to life in, at Proctor, you need to find something that is familiar enough for students and staff to recognize. Not that there's not value in something classical or, you know, something, you know, more Shakespearean, but if you want people to resonate and, and feel passionate about doing something, they have to know it. They have to be able to look at a movie and to, to pretend at home for years on end. You know, I always thought Emma would do, you know, The Wizard of Oz or, you know, something else like that, uh, and, or Grease, you know, and she never got that opportunity, and that's fine. Uh, but you, you can't find passion in something unless you know what it is, I think, for some of these kids, so thank you.
And the Spring Musical will be March thirteenth, fourteenth, fifteenth. All right, any other board member comments?
I just want to say, they, um, was it Nathan that shared the wonderful story about Phil, his father? Fantastic, so great to see that. Brought back so many memories, great pride, so. And I went into journalism, that was my, my bachelor's degree, because of here, so, great stuff.
And had Nathan and I not met at Woo So's, that used to be called Beaners, I would have been the, the journalism advisor. He was going to take yearbook, and I was going to do journalism when Phil retired, and he and I met down at, at Woo So's and said, you know, I really like yearbook, can I keep it? He said, well, I love to do journalism, done. So, so, thank you to our administration for allowing that to happen. All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none. The next is a motion to adjourn, looking for the motion. Wow, that was reluctant. All right.
And I'll second that.
Tammy will second it. All right. Um, we will adjourn our meeting then at eight oh one. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no, and that motion unanimously carries, and thank you for watching at home this evening.